Selectment's meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:10. The first order of business is the approval of meeting minutes.
Do you know the thickness of this pile this week?
Yeah, yeah. All right, let me go through them to be sure we were all here. Yes, the minutes of Monday, April 14th, all were present. Tuesday, April 22nd, all were present. And executive session on the 22nd as well. If somebody wants to stop and ask a question about any of these as we go through. Monday, May 12th, all were present. Monday, May 19th, all were present. And executive session on May 19th. Open session on June 23rd. We'll hold those because we weren't all present for that. So, all of those that I read, we were all present for and all may vote. So, I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I shall move.
Second.
I did look at them, found nothing, no detail or anything in motion. I couldn't remember the detail back at that time anyway, but I think they were just fine.
Very smart, because we can't remember anything.
No, 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 not by design.
Well, I mean, I read through them and they seemed fine to me.
They seemed fine.
Okay. Any other discussion, question, comments? Then I take a vote. All in favor of approving that list of minutes?
Aye.
Okay. And now we'll do...
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
On this agenda should be for new business that we need to approve the munici bid sale of the tractor.
The mower.
The mower.
We'll write that down and we'll do it.
I'll put that as 20.
Okay.
Oh, 19A, how's that?
All right, then we have minutes for the open session of Monday, June 23rd. Selectmen Andrew and Booman present. And notes of an executive session on the same night, also Andrew and Booman present.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we will, I think we need a brief follow-up and executive session of what we did last week. Okay?
I think it's on. Oh, it may not be on there, okay. Maplewood's listed.
But you can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can. Does it happen?
I just thought...
No, it's on there.
Yes, I mean, I wanted to have a further discussion of the statement and I wanted to discuss very quickly what we had discussed in the executive session last time now that we had all three selectmen here.
Okay.
Okay? That's all right.
Yeah.
I mean, it's an important piece of litigation, I thought we should... All right, we have...
I'm trying to think if it's on the table along with...
Oh, okay, there. Okay, we have approval of fiscal year '14 motor vehicle refunds totaling $88.23.
Move or approve?
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All who's in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is 7:15, which is the appointed hour. Thank you to the Historical Commission for coming in.
Long time.
We have the Historical Commission coming in to talk about the status of various historical renovation projects. Yeah?
Can I have pale? Never been asked.
Yeah, I'll get it to you in a minute. Yeah. Well, I, do you want to say something to that?
Yeah, I requested that you come in, interested in the status of particularly the Bullet House and the Hearst House at this particular time. Just seeing if there's any way we can find some help if you need help or whatever needs to be done. But it's been going on for quite a few years and if there's something that you need or something like that, maybe we figure out how to get some help to get them done, fixed up. And I did have, I asked Larry Brand to take a quick look at them a couple of months ago. He wrote a letter. I wasn't here the night he actually showed up and haven't discussed it since, but certainly is a need of renovation on the structural aspects of it, the sills, and it's really in tough shape. So, I guess I asked you to come in and talk about the status of it and time schedule and what the plan is, the action plan, get them straightened out.
When we got to the Bullet House, we've, and particularly to the things that Larry referred to in his letter last fall, we've opened up the kitchen floor so that the inside of that wall could be examined. And we've had the building inspector come in and look at that. And he has responded with a letter to the board in regard to his current situation.
Well, we've only get to help out. Last sentences, rather.
The, that area did not prove to be as bad as it might have seemed from the outside. And that is why he made the statement, "Oh, gee, I could come by and help out with this." So, he thought we could do it in a day, the work that needs to be done on that, in that area. And that we'll provide materials and a little help time and he'll see to that for us. We were really delighted to find that it was absolutely dry in the bit.
Really?
And it was, that seemed just unbelievable compared to what we've had in some other areas.
Yeah.
But there is, there's ledge and stones right under the floor. And so, there's not a lot of, there's certainly no crawl space there. It's a little bit of space you can see into and that's about it. So, it really was necessary to open it up. And most of that structure on the outside was okay. A few things need to be addressed, the threshold and the outside boards and a couple of pieces of the bottom part. And he felt we could do that in a day.
Really?
So...
Great, once you got a more detailed look at it, got the floorboards up, you could see that.
Well, yeah, and once you could see what the inside of the wall looked like.
Right.
And the other thing was that we covered it on the outside for the winter and we didn't have the continuation of the wetness that was showing there in the fall. And I'm not, I can't explain that entirely, what was so different. But the fact that it was so different means that if we're careful and we do a little bit on the outside, we shouldn't have a great problem with it. It looks pretty good. And again, we need to catch water so that we have less of it coming down to splash, at least three quarters of the year in the winter. If freezing would make that a problem.
What do you mean, like a gutter on the roof or something?
Yeah. The way that that has frozen up in the past when it had one there...
Yeah.
Makes me concerned about it in the winter. And Larry agreed that that might be an issue. So, it might be something that's removable seasonally. We've talked about that, so we'll see what we can do with that. But that would be a low-cost issue too. He did briefly refer in the letter to the, a new foundation under the other end. And we've had two contractors in to look at that. And we, our plan is to have it jacked up a bit and open it up around the sides and do a little excavating and put in a good footing and enough blocks to bring us up an appropriate amount above grade. And then to refill again with a new wall that will hold the whole thing up.
Is that the L you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, in a suitable way. And he seemed, Larry seemed to like that method of handling it. There will probably be some additional joists under the floor to stiffen the whole thing because it was originally built as a shed and it's under on the size of the joists and on the distances between them. So, that would be worked out and we think we have a pretty good plan. We're awaiting an estimate from one of those contractors. And if the estimate proves to be something that we can handle with our current, that we can reasonably start with our current budget, we would anticipate that will start in July to do that work.
On that, Barry, would it be, Nina, my guess is, particularly if that runs into, you think it'll run into thousands? Any idea where the contractor's gonna get it?
It will certainly be thousands, I don't know how many. We've got $5,000 on hand we can apply to it.
Yeah.
We know, we're not sure whether that'll cover it at all.
So, did Larry describe kind of specifically what needed to be done there to brace it up and monitor Joyce for...
Larry originally made a whole different suggestion, trying to do it even more economically with some columns under it and jack it that way. But we really wanted to do the foundation because we want the whole, we want to deal with the outside envelope.
Yeah.
Which has not been very good either.
Okay.
Even if we had the structural problem taken care of, we still need the outside envelope, so that's why we've done that work.
Also, would prevent draft and whatnot that comes right through the whole...
Sure, all right. I would imagine.
And also straightening the floor would be really useful for, I mean, even if it's just a storeroom, to be able to put anything in there, it's really pretty out of the room right now.
All right. The reason I ask is that particularly if you take advantage of Larry's help to easy pack first, get going, you might catch on and you might get the whole thing done virtually nothing. And that's something I always like to see volunteers working on town stuff. It's good for us all. I mean, knowing you consider that approach to it as opposed to getting bids and spending money.
We've done a lot of volunteer stuff and we expect to do more. We've had a couple of jobs that we've had done, that we've been paying for, which are electrical and, well, the fire line that we had put in last year. And some plastering in the, the boarding and plastering in the entrance rooms on the fire in the house. And that was done this winter and we hope to complete the work on that room. We have one potential volunteer to help us with that. And I think that we might be able to do most of that remaining work in that room with volunteers. But this structural thing is something we really want to get done with dispatch. And one of the things with volunteers often is it takes a while. And we're a little concerned about that. We'd rather get that taken care of so that we don't have it hanging over us and we're not rushing to try to get it done before it freezes in the winter next fall. So, if we can get a good price, we'd kind of like to go to the contractor and see it done right off.
Okay.
And pretty much with local people by what I've heard said, but we've still got to see what that'll be.
Okay.
Our second alternative that we've worked on there would involve a bit more volunteer labor and probably spread it out over a longer time. And a more generous contractor money situation. But we are concerned about how that then starts to lag behind. So, because of the structural nature of this, we'd love to see it done with dispatch and be done.
When do you see it getting done, this fall, being ready to, do you get that done in year?
We're looking to see, getting both of these done by fall. That's our goal. And I mean, with Larry in regard to that, as soon as we have a stock list from him and he has it in his calendar, we'll probably go up on a Saturday and just do that work across the back of the house.
If you let me know, I'd appreciate it. I could give a hand, particularly if there's some bull work, dumb work to be done. Give you a hand.
Whatever might be.
All right.
Al Roseberry, Al Roseberry looked at it with the floor up, right?
He hasn't been in since the floor's been up.
Oh, but now that the floor is...
But I did talk to him because the floor is up.
Well, it's shit's plywood. It's not, it's like the plywood.
Yeah.
We take it out and put it back in.
Yeah, we're keeping them in place so we don't have them go back somewhere in front of the house.
Right, 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 I understand.
So, he can do this. There's not much plumbing involved.
Yeah.
He took out, previously took out the plumbing that served the kitchen when we were doing some other work there, probably four, five, three, four years ago. And in order to replumb the water from under the bathroom to the kitchen sink while the floor is up, that can be done now. And with all this work done, we don't have to worry about it freezing anymore. So, we're looking at this as a good thing and we can get that. The plumbing that would be concealed would get done now so that while we have the floor up.
Is that heated in the wintertime?
Yes.
Okay. I know, you know, past couple of years, the window right in the front, there's a piece of wood there and it's always knocked in. And we ought to get that window replaced in there too. You drive by and the...
Oh, the cellar window.
The cellar window is open.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
There must be pipes underneath there.
That is the area near the furnace.
Because it was...
To some extent, that feeds the air for the furnace, but it's...
Oh, really?
We do intend that it be mostly closed up.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, that needs to be dealt with. I guess I'm done with that. Is there anything else about the bullet that we haven't talked about that's current?
Did you have Larry kind of, did you look at specific things or did you have him kind of do an overall assessment of the building and what?
This time we had, we were dealing with the specifics of that back wall that we'd opened up for him.
Yeah.
When we have the estimate from the contractor, we've talked to him in general terms about, when we have the estimate from the contractor, we will review that with Larry.
Okay.
And if he wants to come up and take a look at it again, we can do that.
Okay.
So, we want to make sure that that job gets to a level that will please him.
Okay. If you let me know and you do any more inspections, I'd appreciate it. How about the Bullet House? What's the stage of that right now?
I mean, the Hearst House.
Excuse me, the Hearst House.
The Hearst House.
Time frame?
That's really a project of the Historical Society, but since some of us wear both hats, we can talk about it.
Well, who owns it? The town or the society?
Well, that could be, I suppose, debated. The society bought it from the previous owner, got permission from the Cemetery Commission to put it back, put it in the bearing ground.
Right, right.
And did so. The society has always been the one that had work done on it and took care of it from the time since. And all of the funding that's been involved in it, it's either volunteer work and funding such as it was from the society. And the current rebuilding, re-restoration is also being funded by the society through We don't have a date for when it will be back. We have, a large part of the work has been done on the frame. Julie, you had some pictures there?
I do, I have a series of pictures that show the dismantling here in the cemetery.
I showed it.
Yeah, on the electronically.
Sure. Oh, I haven't, no.
Well, anyway, there are prints of those and they're, they're very detailed. And then I have the most recent work that was done this spring was the creation of a new floor. And that's probably the most interesting to look at if you want.
Where is it? What town is that?
Swahala Restorations in Wales.
Wales, oh, yeah.
And that's where Tim Wallhuter has his work site. And because that building is so small...
Yeah.
He dismantled it, trucked it over there.
Right.
Built the floor there also.
What is, what is the budget? Do you have all the money you need for it? Where are we now?
We've spent $10,000.
Yeah.
We have $1,100 in our Hearst House fund.
Yeah.
And it's likely that, that it will cost probably no more than about $14,000, maybe as much as $15,000 total.
Incredible. Well...
Well, it just had gotten to, it had so many condition problems. This is the new floor frame that's been made for it. And some of the work he's been doing in that.
Yeah.
I think he's away here. Let's see it.
So, he's doing this all like the way it would have been originally built?
He has saved everything you could possibly save from that structure and has rebuilt pieces, spliced pieces, wedded them to what's original with new material.
What percentage of the original structure you think is going to be kept?
I'd have to ask him. I don't know.
I mean, when we moved it from its previous site into the bearing ground, the whole bottom was gone. So, all of that has, had to be redone then and it's being redone now.
I remember Freddie grew, put a timber in there. I helped him put a timber in it.
Yeah.
Walter Allen and I put doors on it.
An upper timber. And he's tried to save as much of that upper frame as he could. The, and that's involved some epoxy work and the things that were deteriorated. And both of those back corners were seriously deteriorated in the joints. Some of it wasn't even visible until it was taken, until it started to come apart.
Yeah.
And so, that, he's been working on that too. And then it comes back together and we've got, I mean, a lot of the, a lot of the sheathing boards and all that, we have in storage over at the Bullet House. So, it'll come back and come back together when ready. But I don't, we don't have a schedule on that right now. And again, as I say, we have about $4,000 that we're trying to raise to, we go back to him and start talking seriously about bringing it back and getting it put back in. And at that point, we can talk about schedule with him.
Okay. Feel confident about getting that for, Brian?
Hmm?
Feel pretty confident of getting that for, Brian? You've really been struggling to raise money though, yeah.
I think so. It's, well, we have felt offhand in terms of our own priorities that while we want this project done and completed, we're more concerned at the moment about getting the Bullet House project going this summer. And hopefully, we can get this done this year too, but we'll see. If we can raise that additional money, we'll have a good chance of doing that.
With that new entranceway room done and the gallery's done, so we're pretty close to being able to open from there.
That's the only other thing to mention is the entranceway was plastered. When was that finished?
The what?
The entranceway in the Bullet House...
Yeah.
Was plastered when in the last...
January.
Okay. That timeframe, yeah.
We're waiting to get a little bit more done in there that we've been promised. And then we've got, yes, the completion of that would mean that we can open those three rooms on some kind of a regular basis. And the fourth downstairs room could be pulled into that and be used as well. The one other thing that we've got that really affects us on occupancy is handicapped accessible entrance. Now, we've produced that in the building. It's the parking. We've got to get a parking space out there, outside of that, that's basically on level with the building. And we've got a plan for that, but that also relates to the plans for what goes on at the Town Hall because of the shared spaces there. And if we can, as soon as that start, that project starts to move again, perhaps we can get the plan for the parking space okayed so that that also can be moved along. But anything is quite temporary in terms of open use until we can do that because one of the basic requirements in the building code is that if you change the use of a structure, especially putting into any kind of a public use, you have to provide a handicap entrance. Not necessarily everything inside, but a handicap entrance as part of that.
Even on a historic building like that? I mean, I'm not against a handicap entrance, but I mean, it's the law of the law.
Yeah. Well, we've done the stuff we need to do, the exception to get in the parking lot and back in, parking space put in. And we do have a plan for that, but we have to see, make sure that that's going to fit with the plans to do the parking lot up and back for the Town Hall.
Just one point on all that, going back to my volunteer idea, you know, if you, one thing is, I find if you pay somebody to do one thing, then let's say, I could call somebody and get a volunteer to do your parking lot for your specs, they're going to say, pay that contractor to do that, I'm not going to do it for nothing. So, that's one, one problem I found from experience when volunteers, you take it, you take advantage, you get their buy-in, you get their support. When people do something for you, they're, you've got them quicker than if you did something for them, you know? So, just think about it a little bit on that. You know, I've always been interested in the, in the history of the town. I've put together, over the years, written a number of things. I just want to give them to all of you to look over and think about it. And how often do you meet, Barry? Do you have a regular schedule?
We try to meet the second Wednesday of the month.
Because there's so much to be done, so much opportunity, but if you just take those and if you can't get to sleep at night, maybe take a look at that and that'll help you go to sleep. Get one of you to you.
Thank you.
But there's so much that can be done.
Does he have another one?
I think volunteers that come out of the woodwork and help you do this.
Mary, I have a chance.
Mary, you want one?
Well, it has to be part of the meeting.
I'll get, I'll get one.
No, this is fine, I have an extra one.
Okay.
There you go.
Thank you.
It's just, just, it's, town's a great little town and I just would like to see a lot of stuff done and I'm willing to help out in any way I can. And I really think that there's a really latent interest throughout the town in this type of stuff. Come out of the woodwork and help you do it, participate, so just take a look at it and I will probably attend your meetings just to listen and see what I can do to help out. I just think it's so important to do. Okay, that's all I have.
Any, anything else?
No.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And thank you for the progress that you've been making.
I think they have a question.
Yeah.
Oh, you guys have a question? I haven't asked that.
Unrelated. Mitigation money. Oh, do we want to discuss that?
Mitigation money for historic preservation.
Yeah.
Needless to say, we've just discussed the three things we could use some help with in that department. So, we're wondering what might be happening in that area and what might be the method under which that will be distributed or applied for.
Well, I think what we had discussed in the past was the idea of putting together, you know, sort of a formal mini grant, you know, application. And that we would try to create some criteria for scoring, you know, requests... And that we would try to create some criteria for scoring, you know, requests, obviously, you know, the subject matter, its importance to town, all of that, but also if there was alternate, you know, demonstration of, you know, additional funding and support and so on. So we, because the money really has just, just come in, we haven't addressed the process for that. But we felt that, and I think we still feel this, this way as a board, that, you know, we need, we need to put together, you know, a process that sets, you know, criteria, a sort of objective scoring process. And then we would make a recommendation about that and then run that through the normal, the normal budget process, I think was what we had decided we would do, or discussed that we would do.
When will you, when will we cross a threshold that will bring that money in or have we?
We have got some in.
So that's part of this?
We have some already.
Every bit of it.
We've gotten. When they reach one hundred and...
Fifty.
No, what's their total build out?
It wanted to be a hundred and twenty thousand.
No, it's more than a hundred and twenty. Well, anyway, when they reach total build out, that's when you'll have all your money, all of the, all of the...
It's a pro, it's a pro rated.
But we're getting some in.
Yes.
Yes, it's based on the square footage.
Review, doing this review that you talked about, does that take town meeting vote or does, we set up a committee with all interested parties on it and?
I don't think we really fleshed this.
No, we have to discuss.
We should do it.
Yeah, we have to discuss.
We should do that.
But it, but the promise we made to everyone was that the money would go through town meeting. So no matter what, the town still needs to vote on how the money gets used.
All right, that's what I asked for.
Yeah.
Fine. We might have a special town meeting next week, wouldn't we?
We might. So anyway, I mean, and, and sort of to sort, to sort it out because the, that money's coming into a gift account that is technically, you know, within
Yes.
the discretion of the selectmen to spend. But we said, and I completely agree with the idea that we put it, at the end of it, we put it through the, the normal spending process, FinCom, et cetera, and so on. But certainly, I was also concerned that we have some orderly process at the front end and we don't end up with, you know, people just unsolicited coming in with projects on the town meeting floor that aren't subject to the same sort of, you know, standard description, scope, amount of information and an opportunity for people to talk, you know, about and vet ahead of time. So that's why we were, we were thinking of putting together, you know, a sort of a, basically a mini grant program, not hugely burdensome in terms of documentation and so on, but so that we had comparable levels of description, comparable discussion about the project, comparable demonstration of alternative support, you know, importance to cultural, educational, you know, historical purposes.
Could we, Mary, put that on the, on the agenda?
I mean, in a way, it almost sounds like a CPA application in another town. I could steal something like that.
It is very much like a CPA application, yes.
Would you like me to call, grab one of those?
I, I, I never believe in, you know, writing something and doing it's already been written.
Cleggism is legitimate. Follow it.
Yeah. Yeah, that would probably be a good place to start.
Okay. If you could, when you get that together, if you would make me aware as...
Oh, we will definitely publicize that, yes.
And we would like to have our...
I get the feeling that you might like to make an application.
Yes, absolutely.
I was getting, slowly, I was getting to that point, yes. Absolutely. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I may take July off from my regular meeting schedule because we're meeting tonight since we're all here.
All right. Okay, shall we return to the?
Onward.
Yeah, we have here a request for a Board of Selectmen appointments to at the Tohonto, a sort of ad hoc Tohonto budget planning task force. They want to be in the process in the fall to discuss educational changes for fiscal year sixteen and beyond, and they would anticipate meeting every six weeks or thereabouts.
And be contemplated.
Okay.
I bet between conservation, cemetery and this.
Yep.
I'm on the building committee.
It is an interesting thing.
You've been doing the negotiations.
The teachers.
I think Walter gets to pick something up here. Because I'm still doing the building committee because there's still thickening.
Yeah. And, I mean, I, I want, to a certain, to a certain extent too, I want to see how things are going with this suit that we're talking about later on to see if there's going to be, you know, continuing stuff into the fall about that before I sign on to something new.
Let me just look at that.
Yeah. I mean, we don't have to appoint this tonight.
Today, yeah.
They've released their consulting, their business consulting.
Yes, I noticed that.
Finally.
I mean, we don't, we, you know, we can, we could put this on the agenda for the next meeting. People can think about it.
Sure.
They're not starting, and they're not starting until the fall, so I think if we...
We'll re-agenda that for next week.
Yeah, why don't you agenda that for next time? Because it's first, I think, I think, first, certainly I heard of it, you didn't hear.
Yeah, well, we got the email, so I read it.
Okay. Okay. Does this something we can do for you?
I, I didn't know what happened about meeting with the computer tonight.
It's eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
It is eight o'clock.
Yeah.
And Walter said something about a special town meeting, a potential. Just remember, we have a state primary September nine and a state election November four, so you really need to stay awake from those.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
You want them to stay, that's just fascinating.
I've been there. She is.
Me too.
All right. Next, we have a time off request from the town accountant. She's requesting you use carryover vacation day in the month of July to close up and sell my grandmother's estate. I don't have dates at this time, but we'll make it around the town needs. All warrants and critical items will be taken care of properly. Mary may, will be able to reach me at all times. I don't have any problem with that.
I don't either.
I don't either.
I would love to let her do it.
June is very responsible.
She certainly is. Detail person.
All right. Okay. All right. Now we, everybody, change your hats. Okay? Turn your, turn your cap around because we are now sitting as the Personnel Committee to approve the Board of Health clerk job position. One, and the revised fiscal year fifteen current step and level chart for town employees. Shall we?
The Board of Health job description came in about half an hour before the meeting started.
All right.
Originally, it was very short and they have...
And do we have it here?
Rerworked it, yeah. Where it says Board of Health clerk and it has a little short advertisement on the cover that handout.
This one here?
Yep. And then you put it over.
Is it in here?
I left it with the agenda and...
Oh, okay, so it's not in here.
Where's your agenda?
It's under here somewhere.
I'll give you mine.
Okay.
So it's started like this. That's the advertisement.
Okay.
And this is the job description.
Okay.
And Sue says she basically stole the Inspector Land Use clerk advertisement and job description that I came up with, which I'd stole from another town. So the stealing's in full force.
Okay.
And that's just, no, you'd already put this on the compensation grid.
Right.
But this is just as a personnel committee approving the job description.
Okay. Well, we want to, let's just take a quick moment. Okay, that one looks okay to me.
The only thing I would say in here is that something about they need to maintain confidentiality. Because it does reference, it has access to limited department-related confidential information. So somewhere in the knowledge, ability and skill, we should put something about maintaining confidentiality.
Isn't that more of a policy once you take the job?
I would say that it's part of the essential job, that when you hire someone, they have to know that. I don't know, did we put that in your job description?
I don't know, in me, for me, in my job.
Mm-hmm.
That I don't know off the top of my head. Can't imagine it wasn't in there.
Well, I guess under skill, excellent customer service and interpersonal skills, skills in operating computers and ability to maintain confidentiality.
I, I guess I, I don't think that's a skill. I think that's a policy and a rule and you just have to follow it.
But we don't have a policy on that.
There are, there are state requirements in terms of confidentiality of information and public records and so on.
Well, why would it hurt to put it in here? Just so when people read it, they realize.
They better be mature and not a gossiper.
Well, why don't we?
I mean, they mention it. Why mention in the environment if you're not going to say?
Ability to maintain confidentiality is its own sentence in the KSAs.
All right, then put it under essential functions. Okay?
Yep.
What you, what did you see that in, Mary?
It's in my job description. It's its own sentence.
But I thought they basically used yours as a pattern.
They used the inspector.
Oh, and yours, yours, excuse me.
But not my job.
But your job is substantially more
It is.
significant and a higher level than the filing clerk for the Board of Health, but nevertheless.
Yeah, so we'll have, I'll give this...
They may be handling pieces of a comp claim that have people's health history in it if somebody was hurt at the transfer station, perhaps.
Well, and people apply for septic loans and that has information in it.
Or any, um...
Yeah.
Redo sticker first. And she's saying like, or break on the septic.
Yeah. I think ability to maintain confidentiality is appropriate.
Yeah, I don't want, you don't want your info blabbed all over town.
No, no. No, I wasn't debating that.
Yes, you want people to blab the info all over town.
All right.
Well, before you ask for a vote, let me just tell you, if you ask for a vote tonight, I won't vote. I'll abstain for this reason, for, on this, on this issue, because it just, this year, I don't know what it is, but everybody's looking for more help and credible raises and everything else. I, you know, I've been on the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, I, I can't imagine Board of Health having any more filing needs and record keeping and follow-up and laws than the Conservation Commission. And, you know, we run for the office and we do the job. It can't be, if there's big jobs, some of these going on, the state takes over anyway, ten thousand gallons or more. So some of these bigger developments, I, I don't think add to it. But the reason I wouldn't vote tonight, because I'm making a point to look into it this week. I'll talk to Bill Brookings, I'll talk to the chairman. But it's just, you know, nobody wants to be the bad guy. Sorry, I have to be, but I just, I don't know. We don't have a clerk on Conservation Commission.
Was this not voted at the town meeting as part of the annual budget?
This has been voted as...
I know, I know, but I don't have to vote for it.
And we approved it as the Personnel Committee. We brought everybody in here and talked to them.
Yeah, right.
A couple months ago.
Yeah.
Well, months before the town meeting. You know, they had somebody who was on the board who was excellent at coming in and spending their own time filing and doing everything else, but you're dependent on getting a volunteer who's willing to do that. And I believe that they caught up or are catching up. But, I mean, when they came in, they basically said that three hours a week would be what they needed.
Well, anyway, I won't vote tonight. I'll, I'll consider it next week, but I don't care whether the town meeting vote or not. I mean, everybody, nobody really questions the details of it and
Well, we brought them in.
On second thought, I, I'm not going to vote tonight. You can if you want, I won't.
How, how quickly do they want to hire someone?
They wanted to post it so that they could get applications in no later than July 18th. Our deadline is July 14th, so again, they're bootlegging off of our ad. And we were in the beginning of the week and they want it to be the end of the week so that they can fill the post and get going in the beginning of fiscal year 15.
Well, you two...
With stickers especially. Now, the dump sticker, the transfer station stickers are going to start pouring in because the sticker sales go on sale tomorrow, where it's up on the town website, it's on Facebook, dispatchers are going to, the police department pushed on that Facebook with a warning to the public, know that the dispatcher's first job is to deal with the public dealing on 911 calls, not the transfer station stickers. So I think they're looking for relief for that too. That's just...
I'd never heard of anybody being held up wanting their transfer station sticker.
I, you know, this is new news, it's my first time recycles, so...
You can get a majority of them if you think it's important. You get two votes tonight.
Well, I would say this has been through a lot of votes and approvals at this point and we do have a sister board that has asked us to act on it with dispatch. And so I would, I would accept a, a motion to...
So moved.
And I will second that. Is there any further discussion?
I feel we went, we had the board come in, we discussed this with them, it went through the FinCom, it's been approved at town meeting, and they're under the impression that this job is there. And they're right, we voted it previously already.
And what's before us tonight is really just a description. And I don't think any of us really have an issue with that description, so. And I just want to make it clear that we're approving a description in this vote.
As the Personnel Committee.
As the Personnel Committee.
Yes.
All right. Well, let's change it actually to look at it, yeah.
Hello.
Hey, you are?
Hey. Any, you want to say anything?
No further discussion, okay.
Judy?
No point.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
I abstain.
And, so one abstention and two in favor.
How are you?
Good.
I'm not on the agenda.
You're in. I'm not on the agenda, but I just want to say thank you for everything.
Oh, great.
Okay? Really appreciate it. Everything just gelled right into place.
That's wonderful.
It was a great party.
Yeah. Thanks for my citation. Duncan Baum Day will always be remembered by our family.
All right. We celebrate it every year.
Yeah. We should have a big party in the South Combe or something. Excellent.
Harry win on their shoulders.
Okay, I just...
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, if you wanted to do number eight now, the Constable Baum could take number, documents related to number eight and go post them.
All right, sorry.
I don't know if you got that message.
Yeah, the state primary.
Okay.
Tell me what I got to do. Eloise will help me along with this.
They need to be posted by August 15th, so you've got lots of time.
No, no, never tell anyone that.
We might as well do it.
Okay. Okay. We have a warrant for the state primary September 9th, 2014. All in favor of issuing this warrant?
Aye.
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 So we can execute it.
This is your first warrant test?
Got to make sure I do it right, huh?
Absolutely.
Eloise would be very upset.
I should also make sure I do it right, boy.
This is the first lesson of retirement, that if you're just hanging around, some people will give you something to do.
Something to do.
Yeah.
Don't stand there.
Just stand there, dude.
Keep moving.
You got some signing to do here.
I do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Constable.
I don't know what I'm doing.
You're basically just signing it on the date that you post them.
Oh, okay.
Here, I'll just give all of these to you. I mean, you can go talk to Eloise.
Yep.
Why are you signing anything?
Oops. Oh, well, I messed that up.
She's signed this, Constable.
I was talking about it.
He's actually a job.
That's right, Duncan.
Just initial it.
That's why they are experts.
Yeah.
I should never talk and sign.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We need a sample. Eloise has some really enough to go.
I'll see you tomorrow morning.
How's that? I'll see you tomorrow morning in your office, I was... Thanks for stopping by. Thank you for stopping by, sir.
Enjoy that leisure time.
Thank you.
All right, it is 8 o'clock, which I think was the appointed hour for the systems discussion.
You're the only one, well, an Eloise.
Do I get a reward?
Yeah, dude.
Well, I guess we can do some other things. People coming in here? Or is that our meeting, just between us?
Well, it was supposed to...
Diane was going to come to this tonight in person. I think that the hope was for more people to come. The chief wrote some comments, which are all bundled together. The chief, the treasurer, and the accountant all wrote comments and bundled them in that package.
Okay.
The problem, though, is deciphering all this written stuff now.
Yeah.
But I think the push is more, what do you want to do following the meeting that Judy and Walter went to?
Walter and I attended it.
Yeah, we'll talk about that for a moment.
Well, can we look at... I want to see what... So, we attended the meeting. It had an agenda. There were a lot of people there. And I think what came out of it... I don't know what happened to the agenda here. People were very upset. There, when they had questions about things, they were answered rudely.
Question wise, or...
I don't know how to say. There wasn't very good customer service going on.
Sounds like a very nice way of putting it.
Yes. The job that he defined is not the job that I think, I envisioned was supposed to be getting done. So there's two people. There's Dan, who's been doing the email, and Briarly's been doing basically everything else.
The server.
The server. And it seems like that that job, those two jobs should be one job. Because the one group that doesn't seem to be having any problems is the police, and they're just using Briarly. And then it turns out that there's no inventory of computers. There's no knowledge of what's on one person's computer and what's on another person's computer. So some people have been using Drive C, other people have stuff on the server, and it's kind of confusing on what's getting backed up and what isn't. Mail is still missing for some people. And it was missing for other people, like, I think in June, and then she got, like, what, 100 emails?
500.
500 emails back, which she had to then go through all of them again. So it... I don't know what to say. There was no input from, there's no input being taken into consideration from any of the users. It seems more like a top-down approach, that this is how it's going to be, so...
Can I speak for the library?
Yep.
I mean, for us, we don't have the same issues with email because we're part of the central mass network. So a lot, it was an education for me, because I kept, I did hear about problems, but that was, I didn't realize how much of a problem people were having, so... And I've dealt with Dan since I started a little over a year ago, so he's been very responsive and taking care of our needs. I was a little dismayed when I heard he was leaving, but I guess it's down the road, so we have time to plan for the future. My only really overall concern was, how does everything fit together? Because since I started, I just spoke to Dan. And I wasn't sure how he fit into the overall picture.
I'm not sure.
But I can see now that this has all been being worked out over time.
And we really need a kind of plan. And there is no plan.
Well, it seemed like two levels of problems. One was the technical aspects, what the consultant does, you know, every time you get a problem, you call them. And then it was the other one of just organizing or coordinating who's buying what hardware and software. It seemed like anarchy more than anything, but I don't know what the job of the IT is, what the description is, whether it's supposed to be a service.
He gave us a job description. I think that, you know, we need to have a big picture of where we see the town going. Because right now, it's like, this computer was set up this way, and it's never changed. And it's supposed to be the responsibility of the person using the computer to maintain it. I take it, I mean, they make...
There's an expectation that laymen who know their job know the IT system when they don't. So it's just a bevy of problems, and I don't know how you tease it all out on us later on.
So we don't even have an inventory of the computers?
No.
You don't know what's on them, you don't know what you have physically. It's kind of the Wild West.
And is that all a problem, because of fact, some of that stuff, public records and...
Yes. And then we did have a discussion about what public records were, but I don't think everyone agreed with his interpretation of what public records have to be kept and what is a public record.
He contends that the emails to and from the selectman's office are a matter of convenience, but are not public records under the public records law.
I'm not clear. We got an email this week about stuff that's being done, and there was something about an underground manual.
Yeah, I think what he's saying is that the Briarly, Dan in himself know how repair root roots, or how, you know, repairs get made, understand this. But I don't think the end, he says, I think he's saying the end-users don't necessarily know how things get repaired, so...
Can I see that description, Judy?
So, yeah, his recommendation was to create a committee to help steer IT forward.
Now, see, my problem with committee on this is that, you know, a committee is, designs the... What is it that, you're asking for a horse and the committee gives you an elephant?
Actually, what I've heard is that a moose is a horse designed by a committee.
I mean, I think it would be great if you could get some people in town, but I think that, you know, we need to look into getting somebody quarter-time, halftime, who, a professional IT person, who can help us move forward. Because you've got this permitting going on, supposedly, the online permitting system, and...
And there's no line for it to be on?
No, I mean, a cer... I don't know that there's... There hasn't been a lot of communication between the data systems person and the person who's championing the online permitting, so...
Third-party.
And the third-party software. And so there's some...
Do we have any sense how other towns deal with this?
No.
I just saw a thread about that today. The town of Broughton put out a call to the world asking for all the other town administrators and secretaries to chime in about how they're handling their IT. Broughton's larger, and I actually sent her an email saying I'd be interested in hearing your response. And it's a little early.
But you lost the email, right?
Email's lost, no. I just happened to beat this one.
No, it sounds like an interesting thread. I would be curious to...
So, yeah, so maybe what we should do is contact towns that are of a similar size, maybe a little bit bigger, and see how they...
Well, you know, Bolton, I mean, certainly Bolton, Boylston.
I think going on a population alone doesn't capture the idea that you have so much commercial development.
No, no, but I think, you know, I think it'd be worthwhile going to Bolton, Boylston, maybe Harvard. And I don't think, I mean, maybe just go to two or three like that and see what they're, you know, what they do.
Yeah, the permitting, certainly a big load Berlin, but it seems more basic than that. Just actually coordination of who's buying what software and that type of thing. Got to get a handle on that.
Well, and there didn't seem to be a lot of communication going on between him and anyone else. I mean, he, I mean, I was surprised when he said that if people wanted training, they could go to, like, Assabit Valley and get it themselves, as a former corporate trainer. I mean, you could, I don't know. There are certainly services that... So anyway, in the end, not all the computers are set up the same way. There's no inventory of the computers. Nobody seems to know who to call.
I'm not sure if there was a defined capital plan either.
There's no capital plan, and he's decided that you don't need to replace any new computers until 2017. You know, a lot of it is, has, just hasn't, the people who use it have not been kept informed.
GOTMS advises that the inspectors and even the assessors out in the field could be using laptops or tablets that sync up Wi-Fi or cell tower pings to keep everybody live. Public safety could be using GOTMS, the next iteration of it, too. But there's no forward talking about technology. In fact, there's talking of tamping down on storage space.
Would, just a brainstorming group with our IT coordinator, Dan, Mark Burton, Garth, just a one, two-hour session, could they map out and say, look, this, we've got this problem, this problem, this problem, we need to do one, two, three, four, just a kind of basic skeletal action plan, and then find out whether we're going to hire a consultant or not?
There's very happy customers in the police department. There are very happy customers in the police department.
And all they use is Briarly.
Briarly.
Briarly. I think we, I think the, well, first, my first question is, doesn't the data system coordinator report to us?
Yes.
So I think that maybe he should come in and tell us what his plan is to solve some of these issues.
Okay.
Wouldn't you think that would be a first step?
Yeah, I thought, because he might be here tonight, because we're having...
He actually argued that he would not be here tonight, well in advance of tonight. I don't know if that gets towards the customer service aspect of it.
Well, maybe you should give him some dates and see which one he can come in.
Right, okay.
Well, I mean, it does sound...
I mean, he certainly knows what the issues are.
Yeah. And actually, the email that I thought was fairly good outlined things, wasn't it?
His agenda, the agenda that he put up?
Yeah, I thought that we had a subsequent email.
"We will be issuing a full report shortly, but there was an observation that came through loud and clear, the need for us to move from laissez-faire reactive to one that is more proactive. We already have infrastructure manuals affecting the underground that is not seen by the user, but we do not have the equivalent for the user. They're going to issue user guidelines in the form of bulletins. This will form the basis of a formal user manual. The report will expand on this approach and continue the initial list of pending bulletins, as well as an action item list derived from the forum. I thank you for your input and hope that we can move along."
Well, I think, you know, if we were going to have that report in a couple of weeks or so, or four weeks, or, you know, whenever it would be, hopefully not much longer than that, we should probably...
Wait to do something? Well, and...
Well, I mean...
Now, there's a problem, I think that Bruce was sending you, the fire department has a problem.
With Pamnet, and they were looking to merge their services also with Briarly. There's like an underground movement towards Briarly. And the response back was, due to cost reasons, we'll put the fire chief on Briarly, and everyone else will continue to be served with Dan. So in addition to having town problems and email problems, then you've got server issues with Pamnet that Briarly and Pamnet can't even figure out, but they're saying that Dan would still support three of the four fire department computers. And chief says, can you just let me have all of my services through Briarly? Because they're all on a cordoned-off virtual server. Anyhow, police is now on its own.
Well, if he could pay for that in his administrative expense budget, I don't see why that's a problem.
I don't know what the answer is.
Why don't you ask him if he was assuming, I mean...
I don't think that the police pay for it separately.
Don't they pay for Pamnet?
They all pay for Pamnet. That's the part that 911 stuff runs on and everything. This is talking about the division, so there's Pamnet, and on top of that, then there's, Briarly does the support, and then Dan is in there doing the emails. So I think what he wants is to have everything on Briar... Just have Briarly and Pamnet. I don't know, did he write you a letter?
No, I was looking in the chief's letter to see if there was any indication of whether this comes out of his department administrative budget or the general.
I don't think that there's a writing in the packet about that, but maybe...
No, I haven't either. Well, I mean, theoretically, data systems should be covering all of the support.
Yeah, as I say, I just wondered what budget.
I know he increased the budget just prior to town meeting. Richard, can you...
That was to include service for Comcat Charter because of the email problem. He said that putting the town under a contract with Charter for support services would stabilize email, would get them to the right... Because calling Charter business isn't sufficient. We're a municipality that uses Charter, so we're kind of a different animal, and it required a different level of support.
Why don't we simply ask Richard to come in at our next meeting? We need to sit down and go over this.
Next meeting, July 14th, yes, with the FinCom joint meeting to close out the year.
Sure.
Yeah, because we need to get a handle on this.
Okay.
Okay. All righty. Any...
Any other comments?
Well, just from the library perspective, since I started a year ago, April... Well, just from the library perspective, since I started a year ago, April, I've only dealt with Dan. I didn't even... I wasn't even aware of how the whole thing fit together. But Dan, you know, when I ask him for, you know, we're having a problem with, say, we have a copy printer that's really ancient. We don't even know where it came... A lot of our equipment is... Has been donated or so forth, and he's just kind of kept it going. But I don't know where it comes from, you know? I'm not even... He just...
Where the equipment comes from?
Right.
It just appears?
I mean, we... Yeah, it just appears. So, he... Like, we were having a patron computer that was running XP, so I emailed him and say, "This looks like it could be a problem."
Is Dan on retainer, or is it...
Well, that's the thing. I assume he is.
Well, I think the library is different because you don't use the town server.
Exactly. We don't have a lot of the same issues that markets have. But we have sort of a special... We're sort of an outlier. We have other issues, but Dan's aware of those because he's been working with the library for a while now. So, I hate to lose him without him passing on his knowledge to whoever's going to be taking over.
Here's on, like, public safety. There's loyalty factions on service providers. There's division of opinion between those, too. You hear it, strong opinion for Dan, you hear strong opinion for Briarly.
Well, I think the issue isn't Dan. I think it's that you've got somebody doing email, and then there's the server people, and if the two of them are intertwined, then it takes twice as long to figure out what the problem is because you've got somebody who has to communicate to somebody else. I mean, that's what it sounded like to me, was that...
Which, of course, is not all that unusual in business. I mean, people who are maintaining servers and so on are not the point of service for the users very often.
Briarly's available 24/7. Dan's available outside of his work schedule because he has his own business. And then the other thing that you have going on is that everyone has part-time hours, some days where their office isn't open, some hours where they're not here.
Dan has a key to all of that.
I'm not talking about just... I'm not talking about Dan. I'm just saying, there's a bunch of different features here that are in play that make it difficult to support people.
Well, and I think the big thing is, is that there's no... I mean, typically, when you're in an office environment, you all have the same base software. So, you might all have Microsoft Office and the operating system, and those can all be updated, and you can't touch them. You can't load anything else on, and this has been kind of like the Wild, Wild West, as I said before, where, you know, some people are using Drive C to put their information on, others are using the server, and they don't know.
We'll talk to Richard about it at our next meeting.
And there's... Well, it's only because Tom wasn't there, there's different levels of administrative access. Some people have almost unlimited access to do things to their computer. I'm one who doesn't. So, you know, for anything as basic as an Adobe update or any other kind of updates, I can't do them. And Dan suggests that everyone be in a lockdown mode, which I don't care, but I'm just saying that he would then be needed for every Adobe update, for every software update, for every office individually.
Well, it does seem to me that we do need to develop some kind of basic framework and rules, as you say, you know, a basic setup policy in terms of access, you know, and administrative access to the machines.
Flesh out that job this week.
Where you keep... Where you keep data, emails, and so on. And then, you know, basically, a policy for probably for updates as well as you're done. So, I think it does seem to me we need to establish a framework for at least those things. What I'm also hearing is we need to... We even don't have a terribly good handle on the hardware, either where, what we have now, or a capital plan for changing hardware and updating basic software packages, so that, you know, I mean, I'm hearing that sort of list of things.
I know it's hard to figure, but every single office here creates data and use it all day long like oxygen. So, it's really mission critical as more and more stuff gets electronic and faster.
Yep. Yep. I hear you.
Okay. So, we'll wait.
Do you have anything? We have not made any decisions to remove anybody, you know, change, I mean, so... And there will be other meetings before anything of that sort happens.
All right.
All right. Right? Is that fair to say?
Yep.
Thanks for coming in. Thanks.
Yeah.
Do you have anything particular?
James has administrative hours. I can know it, and I'm happy.
It's probably best, right?
Very good for the dog licenses.
Do you want to talk about your dog licenses?
Yeah, if you want to go in order, number six is next.
Just a minute, I want to talk...
James is another source of...
James actually works for Briarly.
Oh, does he?
Yeah.
Okay.
But his hours here are very limited, and he's not able to be picked away from the town clerk's office as needed for help.
Yeah, and remember, he knows that...
Oh, he does. He does.
Okay. The returning...
Six and seven are both the town clerk, actually.
Returning to item five, which is where we were. We are at five B, and we have to vote to approve the current step and salary.
The revision in that was the email flurry this afternoon about the fire department.
Oh, yes, let's talk about that. So, everything else is the same as we voted before?
It is exactly the same.
Okay. So, tell us about this fire department thing.
They are paying on a monthly basis.
Yep.
June had a discussion with the fire chief. He's preparing her, this is what fiscal year 15 will look like. He said he noted that it wasn't on what was approved before by the board, last meeting, last regular open meeting, and asked why. And June said, absent a writing from the personnel committee, which is what we all did before, she doesn't have any written authority to pay anything other than the qualified fighter rate of 1717 an hour. So, what he notes is that the selectmen approved their budget, the FinCom approved the budget, town meeting approved the budget, and just that it was not... It was an oversight, that that was not included in the grade and step listing for fiscal year 15. Anything that has asterisks...
Can we see their budget so I understand what we approved?
Yeah, anything that has asterisk next to it.
It's just under part-time wages. It's a lump sum.
Yeah. So, we didn't approve...
The budget, you did. Fire department budget.
Hang on.
Sorry.
We just approved an amount for part-time wages, period?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. So, we... I mean, we...
I knew about this because I was there when they had the discussion about it.
So, do you want to talk to us about it?
Well, they... The part-time wages, the current rate would be for just the firefighter, and then they increase the rate for the... I think it's in the email. There it is. Deputy chief, anyone that's in the management position, they increase the rate.
It's revised.
Is there any description of these new positions?
They're not new positions. They're existing positions.
How much increase, and yeah, report it.
Well, you're going up from 17 and change for a regular firefighter to 18 and change for a lieutenant, 2052 for a captain, 2275 for an assistant chief, and 25... Up from 17.
The base rate was 17.
Base rate is 17, okay.
So, it's in their budget.
Yep.
It came with the budget paperwork.
So, they went from $17 to over 18 in one thing?
18... 17... 1717 firefighter, 1875 lieutenant, 2052 captain, 2275 assistant chief, 2541 deputy chief. And those are within the grades that they indicate.
Which they're not on the compensation grid now, those posts.
Well, firefighter's in there.
Yeah, that's all.
Actually, they were on the box at the bottom, Judy, that we dropped off the compensation grid this year.
Oh, yeah, so they weren't on the grid at all.
The box needs to come back.
We took the box out.
So, here's the 2013 compensation grid. 1717 is a grade five, step four. I didn't know how to grade the step before, but there it is, 1717. They're not in here.
No, because they were in the bottom.
Because we were viewing it as a stipend rather than an hourly rate, or...
Well, because where it was when I got it, because everybody was at that one rate.
This is how it used to look in the past.
Yeah.
So, qualified fighters, qualifying teams.
And we didn't put the highway superintendent... Oh, none of this got put in this year.
Non-elected, otherwise not on the grid posts.
Okay.
It's going to make a return next year.
So, what percentage increase are they getting over this thing?
Well, the total...
5%?
The total for a code deputy chief, the total for the whole year is $4,000.
The whole year?
For the entire year. And then the assistant chief is for... The captain is 4,930. The lieutenant...
Okay, but what was it before? I mean, if it's... 4,000 isn't any... I mean, I'm not even be concerned about, but I'm curious.
Take $4,000 divided by 2275, and you'll get the hours, and then times them by 17, if you want the answer. Well, what did the wages go up from the previous year?
You have the budget? That's what I think I was asking.
Part-time salary, part-time... Oh, $5,000 was the total increase.
Any total figure?
For part-time wages, the total increase was $5,000 on $40,479. So, that includes the 1%.
Some of the town employees got colder increases this year and others substantially more.
Sure. Highway, do you remember they came in and they talked about changes?
Oh, that one, yeah. Well, that's right, job description change, right?
12%.
A 12% increase.
Well, that line item was a 12% increase. So, I mean, they had to have talked to... Well, I don't know. This is what they requested. Do we have the town report?
That's the town report right there, 13.
Right. I'm going to presume that that's what they got, but... 12.65%, and the finance committee recommended it. So, that's what they got.
All right. I would accept a motion to...
As the personnel committee?
Committee to reissue the table steps and grades with the addition of certain fire department positions and listing a number of...
Officers.
Officers of the town that were left off inadvertently on the previous chart. Do I hear somebody making that motion?
Oh, second. I mean, so moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I would take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
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 It is unanimous. Okay. Next. Okay.
Waiving the dog licenses? Waiving the dog license fees?
Yes.
It was a criticism. I received a critical email and said I can't amend the bylaw. Nobody has authority to, so we just won't. We just put in the $25 fine statute.
Oh, that you can't waive this because of the bylaw?
Such as like...
So, what will a dog license cost now?
Well, it'll be either seven or 11 plus $25 each dog.
How many people are not up to...
I've got about 300 dogs that are outstanding. Some of them could be dead, or sometimes they move.
Along with their owners?
Well, the kids take them to school, and then they come back, and family splits up, the dog goes with them, and, you know, I mean, castor reasons.
Okay.
So, that's what I'll do. Is there anything else that you need?
Guess we're going to appoint your election workers.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I'd accept a motion to appoint the following election workers: Dennis Farabee, Jane Sawyer, Barbara Halloran, Jean Guille, Lorraine Cedar, Bob Guilde, Karen Hill, Judith Newton, Richard Batstone, Sue Regera, Margaret Sardell, Lee Tabor, Frances Gill, Billy L. Benson, Patricia Wheeler, Tim Wheeler, Ed Geir, Stephen Bradley, Kenneth Ron, Jim Sandini, Richard Wheeler, Judy Christensen, Jean Snay, Jonathan Sardell, Chris Flynn, Susan Green, Marshall Tate, Jane Harvey, Priscilla Hogan, Marshall Johnston, James Wheeler, Linda Nelson, Kevin Pond, Nate Wheeler, Janet Woodard, Steve Baird. Those are reappointments. And a new election workers, Mary Wheeler and Ornella Quinn.
And I think this is Lorraine Cedar's 50th year being an election worker.
Wow. So moved.
I think so.
Second.
All right.
What on earth do you do with all of those people? What do they do?
Well, sometimes they're not available for... To count ballots.
It's a pool of people to draw.
It's a pool of people.
All right. Any other discussion besides amazing 50 years?
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign that as the clerk. All right. Then, the next thing we have is the approval of town council bill scheduled to pay recording fee of tax taken to land. That's $125.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next we have... Next, we have approval of the hiring of a part-time dispatcher, Sharon McGowan, who's being requested by the chief of police.
So moved.
Second.
Any...
What are her qualifications?
She has been office manager. She lives on Lyman Road in Berlin, proficient in Microsoft applications. She seems to have worked in private industry at a fairly high level of administrative assistance since... Yeah, the... For about 14 years of experience in business. She graduated... yeah, the, for about 14 years of experience in business. She graduated from Marlboro High School. And there you have, those are the, that's the, those are the ceiling bits.
Sounds like she's capable of being trained and doing the job.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a discussion on Kinder Morgan Tennessee Gas Pipeline Project, a review of the Bolton June 26th meeting.
Walter and I both went to it. They had the selectmen, the Bolton selectmen had requested questions. They got 300 and they distilled it down to 62 questions. And they asked the four, five Kinder Morgan people there. It was interesting. So, I don't know, what can we say about it?
Anything that struck you as new or significant, surprising?
It was interesting. He couldn't answer the question on how, taking a 12-inch line off an existing 12-inch line that is at full capacity and running it down the Worcester, they stumbled over that a little bit, but I don't know, it's, there's quite a group that are getting organized to oppose this, you know. Much, my surprise, Skip Duggan is putting a lot of time in it. He's been going to meetings.
He's had a very extensive.
Rode up a very nice board on one meeting, he's going to another meeting, I think, either tomorrow night or Thursday night, some night this week. So, he might be a point person and given that he really thinks that we need the gas and it's much better than coal and other stuff, so he's not a purist per se, but he just has deep concern about cutting through our conservation lands and they seem to pick a route that goes through as much conservation land to avoid housing as they can without really considering highways and, you know, center open areas or abandoned railroad in one place and a few other things, so.
So this gas would actually be coming up?
From New York.
From New, well, coming out from New York, but the pipeline itself, they would?
Yeah, the gas line that goes through Bolton is coming from the south, pumping north to Pittsburgh. They're gonna tap into that and then come southwest towards Shrewsbury.
And, you know, I mean, I don't know, the easement, the easement would be maybe 30 feet, 30 to 50 feet, but when they're doing construction, there's an additional 25 to 50 feet easement that they would use. And let's see, if your, the pipeline was in normal soils, it would be 36 inches minimum, this is how deep it would be. 24 inches on ledge, 48 inches in farmland and other, under roads, 48 to 60 inches. And it sounds like they have to, the path they have would go under the aqueduct, which is when they would use their HDD, horizontal directional drill. But, you know, in one way, they're kind of saying that more or less you have to do, you have to do it or they're gonna get permission, but they're also trying not to make it sound like that's what they're gonna do. But.
You picked that up too, did you?
Yep.
FERC has a big say in this.
They won't cut off your septic system. Wells need to be 150 feet away. If you were gonna put in a new well, you'd have to be 150 feet away from it. They went through the pipeline approval process and compensation to landowners, which people tried to get a number out of them, which they were not going to. And they, they will negotiate compensation, but they have a, a number that they start out with. It would take three to five months. The construction process will take three, well, this was in Bolton, but three to five months, they stake it out, they take down the trees, they grade it, they ditch, they weld, they string, they fill up the tubes with, the pipes with water that they obtained from ponds. So, they claim that the town would be compensated by the taxes that they get. And then someone asked if they would consider a pilot agreement because the asset would be depreciating. And they said no. So, it was a very long meeting and there were some very angry people there.
Do you have an estimate of how many were there?
Do you, Walter? It was kind of spread out in the auditorium.
Yeah, 75, 80, something like that.
They don't use herbicides anymore. They, they mow.
Okay.
But it's a, it's a long process, a lot of meetings, just a very preliminary, so.
FERC approval, they're saying November of 2016 and I think it was 2018 when the pipe would be. Yes, it's a long process and on the same side, you feel kind of helpless because the federal government's involved.
Well, we spoke at Representative Norton's office, they indicated that the federal government actually about states and the, the application of state law with respect to the land use and so on.
Well, they seem to feel.
I mean, it has to be, FERC has to approve it, they're the federal regulator, but they, they seemed to indicate quite strongly in that meeting that FERC's policy was to, you know, bow to state land use and so on regulations.
Well, I mean, Walter, what I got out of that was they kind of felt that conservation land, you know, they could go through it. That's what I.
Yeah, I actually think this is, I mean, I looked at the state law and I think there's some questions with that. And when we talked in the, in the less public forum, they indicated that they felt that they had to negotiate about conservation land and that they had been successful by, you know, offering to, you know, provide a budding land and so on, more than compensatory arrangements. And so they said that they had taken the approach in, in crossing conservation land of negotiating with the controller of the conservation land to, you had to come to, you know, an agreement rather than.
Just up and down.
Well, yeah, and I mean, they, they seemed to acknowledge the fact that they, they did not, and the state did not have a right of eminent domain for this purpose over conservation land and they had to negotiate. But that was, again, that was what I got from that other meeting.
Well, one of the questions was, does FERC rule on environmental issues raised during the process? And they said yes. And they hire an environmental consultant and it says, if Tennessee Gas obtains a certificate from FERC for the Worcester lateral, will any local approvals, planning board, conservation, or board of health still be required before construction begins? No, FERC is the ultimate authority. So, FERC hires someone as an environmental consultant, but it sounds like they can still say, you know, we don't find a problem here, put the pipe through.
Yeah, again, what I said was, what I heard was slightly more nuanced, which was that FERC is the regulator, but it is FERC's policy to abide by state level, and I agree, local level's a little different matter, but state level issues with respect to land use and conservation, that was what I heard. But, you know, that, that's why this is a long process. We, you know, it's, it's, we sort of continually have to circle around on those issues and come to more definitions, so.
Right. Sort them out and answer them.
Yep. Okay. Tentatively scheduling a July 23rd?
Oh, no, it's confirmed now.
It's confirmed, okay. So that's July 23rd, we're gonna do it at the school?
Yes, 7 o'clock, VMS.
Okay, that's a Wednesday night?
Yes.
So, I know it's June 30th, but since we don't meet until the 14th.
We only have one meeting between now and then.
Do we want to decide how we, I thought the format that the Bolton selectmen used worked pretty well.
Right, controlled, questions were allowed, but they didn't, they have a free for all, they control.
And they, they, they got the questions beforehand and sent them to Tennessee Gas, so they couldn't say, oh, well, we'll get back to you on that.
I wonder how they solicited the questions.
They put it on their website, Facebook. Yeah, we could do the same thing, cable Bolton channel, have a certain cutoff date and knock out duplicates and send them to the company in advance if the company can't say at the meeting, we don't know the answer.
The item would, or even a telegram might just cover the fact that we're having a meeting without charging for an advertisement or something, because it's such a big issue.
Ken Cleveland was there.
Boston Globe called today, met the chairman.
Yes, I, I had to, I was, for about five or 10 minutes, I did get that message. But I didn't answer it, one, because I didn't have very much time, and two, I had not actually been at that meeting and she was actually asking about reaction to the Bolton meeting, so I had wanted, when I got that message, that was one of the things I was talking to her about.
Globe reported today separately than that one. If Globe reported today, it wants to talk about the Berlin.
The message she's left for me was reaction to the Bolton meeting primarily, so.
So should we do the same thing? Ask for questions? Have them sent to Mary?
Sure.
And then run the format I thought was very well-run where they just, so the questions were put into sections. Subjects. And they went through, so background on existing gas pipeline, proposed Worcester lateral route, proposed pipeline. So they had Tennessee Gas give a presentation and then they went through these questions and had them answer, and then they had open mic, which got a little testy. Trying to force them to admit they were selling to Canadian companies the gas at the end.
No, rich China. Well, that's, depending on the questions.
Did China fly to Schrewsbury?
No.
It took, I got out of there at 9 o'clock.
At the ultimate end of this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it was a two-hour meeting and they, they just cut the questions off at, at 9.
Okay. I think that's fine, as I, this is, as I say, this is a liturgic process.
And then we just.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have it recorded.
Actually, that meeting, the Bolton meeting is up on the town's website.
Okay.
Probably put a link to that up on our website too.
All right, so when do we want to close questions?
We need to give the town, the company adequate time to respond in there, slow response.
I would say then let's close questions the 14th, which is our next meeting.
14th, yeah.
Okay, and then that gives them a week and a half.
Yep.
It gives the town two weeks to come up with the questions, then a week and a half. Okay?
Yep.
I'm sure.
They could wing most of the answers.
It strikes me as though they probably answered a lot of these before, yes. All right, so that's that one. And then consideration of signing MACC endorsed letter to New England governors.
Do we have a copy of that letter? Yeah, it was sent, it's, it's in there, it, it.
In where? In here?
I always like to know when.
Here's the letter.
Okay.
I don't know if you'd want, you might want to review it first.
How long is it?
A lot of notes and.
All right. Yeah, okay.
Can you email that?
I'm not ready to do this one tonight, no.
Fine, may have, but it's, you know, it's buried within another email, within another email. I think you need to read it.
There's no way I'm gonna. Did you send that out again, Mary?
I will send that out again. It's from MACC. The other, the other thing that kind of just popped up too, is Walter was saying tonight, which would be maybe an, an item D, is whether Walter thinks that Skip would be a better candidate to go to a, a town administrator level type regional strategy session. He were thinking, Don Lowe and Marty McNamara from Bolton and Boylston are talking about putting together a regional high-level, not open, strategy session about the pipeline. Walter had earlier said that he'd be willing to be the one sitting on that for this town since you're known town administrator. Walter was thinking tonight that maybe Skip would be a better candidate unless he feel like he want to keep it with the executive board.
Who would think it needs to stay with the board?
I, I have no problem, but Skip really, he really, he'd enjoy these kind of all meetings and listen to more stuff than we have, but I'll go, sure.
Okay.
All right, so we'll consider the MACC letter next.
Okay.
Okay. The next is discussion of the Highland Commons mitigation invoice. I talked to both Dennis and Jed Hayes Friday. I needed to look at that amendment one last time and unfortunately I did not get a chance to look at Dennis's notes, Mary, because by the time you sent them, I was on my way home, so I didn't have a chance to access that email. I think after talking with both of them, one right after the other, that I may know what the inconsistency is and I think that when I look at the amendment, I will be able to figure that out. All right. Update on advertising response, and I do need to get a copy of the amendment before I go.
Second amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I should probably get one soft copy so that, because what happens is, just, I keep them around for a month or so and then when I think the issue's done, I recycle it and then as soon as it gets recycled.
You need it again.
Yeah, I need it again, so maybe ultimately to get one soft copy would be good. All right. Update on advertising response for Inspector Land Use Clerk?
Three so far.
Okay.
It's in Monster Telegram, Gazette, it's in Print Telegram Gazette yesterday.
I saw it in the item on Friday.
In the item, yeah, last Friday and this Friday coming up.
Okay.
You had three applicants so far.
Right. And any from out of the country?
No.
No one from Florida?
No, they seem to, no, they all seem to be in state, yeah.
All right, good. Okay. All right. And these are Dennis's notes. I'm gonna set those aside for a minute, look at those at the end, see if there's stuff that I need to take home with me. All right.
That the mass works?
No, I'm looking.
That's some tele grants, I think.
Oh, this is the, this is the stuff.
No, no, that's the advertising.
That's the advertising, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be sure that I wasn't passing something over. Then we have a request.
14.
14.
The Sunny's comptroller, Kathy Greve, is filling out the Intelegrants application for the town online. It's logged on as a town, et cetera. That's okay, that they're proceeding to fill out the grant online.
Will we get a chance to review that?
Well, I talked to Keith and he felt pretty, he felt very confident that she was doing a good job. And he was keeping, I thought he said he was keeping an eye on the information that got put in.
Yeah, I don't know, I really don't have much more to report than that, other than they're trying to be sensitive to not overtax the town on the amount of work that goes into the application. Keith doesn't have the bandwidth to do it, I kind of frankly don't, nor have I the experience, nor the data at my fingertips, because it's not here, it's with their office, because they're building everything.
Ken, is there a way? When is this ultimately going to be submitted, do we know?
No.
Before she submits it, can one of us go down and look at the information?
Yeah, or can it be forwarded to, you know, dumped into a PDF and forwarded to us or something?
I don't know if that's how the Intelegrants works, if you build it as you go, or if you have to submit, once you build it, you have to send it, if there's a way to save it, I don't know.
You know, I'm around, when, before she sends it, I can go down there and look at everything that she put in.
That would be good. I think, I'd feel better, please, this one member, either, if we could, if we can get some kind of report or PDF of it, that's fine, we can review it that way. If we can't, that would be great, Julie.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion regarding the Fire Chief's input on public safety study.
You know, I read that, and I would think, I would hope that we can hire a consultant. We hire a consultant that has the judgment on whether to use those standards, those, all of that from the feds and the state are just basically recommendations, they're not mandates or requirements, and it's different judgment on the size of the town, the things they want to do, and I, I think that at this point, we ought to try and select a consultant, and then not, we don't micromanage a consultant and tell them how to go about their job, his or her.
Well, I didn't think that was, I mean, I didn't bring that letter from, I didn't think that that was wrong in asking that they follow something, right, I mean, he's just saying that they should be following what.
No, Judy, because the, the standards, going by the standards, I think is one of the problems, we get into more expense in doing more than is really necessary for this small town, but those standards are written for Boston and the highest levels, the biggest departments, and if some of them fit Berlin, they pick and choose and use them, but to say that we should follow them, I disagree.
I guess, the way I feel is that we've, as we discussed the last time, we have a basic scope. We will give a sort of second level information.
Right.
The letters from each of the, each of the chiefs, and this would be, this would be submitted as part of that, okay?
Well, what about the other part, that the person has to have so much experience in police chief, fire chief?
No, I'm not in favor of that.
No, we can make that decision, I don't.
Okay.
But, the rest of the stuff, I think, go ahead.
I think part of it was, was that, well, I got, was that you don't want a person, just a sole person, who's going to look at all three agencies and doesn't have experience in all three types of agencies.
I thought we were gonna, that's why we decided to go to a team, we weren't gonna hire an individual, because we were worried about, about that, so if you hire, the three consultants that came in were companies with a number of experts, you know?
Yep.
So that would cover that problem, I think, I hope.
Yep. I have approval for renewal of our membership in Worcester County Selectmen's Association, it's fifty dollars a year.
Fifty bucks, I guess we can swing that.
Yep, I second.
Okay, any further discussion, hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor, aye.
Aye. Have we gotten any minutes from them?
They do send them from time to time.
Yeah, because I don't know when the next meeting is.
I can get that information for you.
Well, it's usually at the end of their minutes, they talk about the next meeting.
And generally, what we do on this is, the chairman is the voting member, and the alternate voting member is the vice chairman, is what we've done in the past, so, is that okay?
Well, I was going to the meetings, or I went to one.
When you were chairman.
Oh, are you gonna go to the meetings?
I don't know. But I, do you like to go to meetings?
Well, I just went because nobody else was gonna go, so, if you want to go.
What kind of, what type of important thing, Judy, have they, they done, is it lobbying legislation, or?
I think it's more getting together and talking about issues that the towns have in common.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it depends on when they have their meeting, but.
And it moves around, it goes from town to town.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
I mean, I think that you've all discussed this a lot before, I think June just wants definitive answer, and I'm not sure if the horse is already out of barn on this, but whether you want to have installment payments on large projects like Cabela's, because when those permits issued for electrical and plumbing, they're gonna be.
We more or less decided that, didn't we, didn't we discuss that?
I, I don't know that it's been.
I don't think we decided anything.
You know, the concern is, I asked Al Roseberry, and he said he thought that plumbing might be sixty-five thousand dollars in plumbing for Cabela's.
Yeah.
And he thought electrical would be more, it could be twice that, because the amount of electrical stuff that would go into a store that size.
I think we, we had discussed the idea that we had done seventy-five percent when we did the other.
Did you want that reduced into a writing, and also that there be installment payments, so that they don't get it all upfront, and then it's there?
Right, it should be installment, something could happen, they could move or leave or something.
I can draft that for your next meeting, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay, so it'd be similar to the Indian Head thing?
Mm-hmm.
The seventy-five percent?
Mm-hmm.
And break it into monthly payments?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-five hundred a month, and then at the end it'd be a balloon payment?
Well, it depends on the amount.
Yeah, right, we, like, the electrical one down there.
Five grand a month?
It was.
Why don't you just do a form, and we'll, and ask them to give you some numbers?
Okay.
Seventy-five percent and a monthly, payments monthly.
Is there a triggering event, because there's already permits that have issued for Highland Commons, do we just talk about Cabela's only?
We're talking about everything in Highland Commons.
Everything in Highland Commons.
Right?
Well, I don't know how we can say everything, because we don't know everything that's going in.
All I mean is that it's all large.
Every project.
Every project. All we mean is, this is the rule that applies to activity in Highland Commons, that's what I mean.
But I mean, okay, so, like, right now, you have tenant fitouts, and they would not be even a thousand dollars for each tenant, a hole in the different shell buildings, but for big things like Cabela's, do you want a triggering event, like, when the fee is ten thousand dollars, then we're gonna break it into monthly installments?
I want it the way we set it, seventy-five percent for everything that happens there.
Seventy-five percent, okay. And then broken.
That's what I think.
Yep, seventy-five, you're saying the same thing.
I agree with that, yep.
And then in monthly payments?
Yes.
Of. Just give us some numbers, and we'll figure it out.
That's, that's, that's the rule, when they give us numbers, we will then be able to consider what the monthly payments should be.
So they should, they.
They should tell us that the expected duration and, and the amount of the fee, and then we can think about what the monthly payment, ultimately, they're getting seventy-five percent, we will determine the monthly payment depending upon the project.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, well done.
I'm, I'm, we'll record that as a vote on that policy, right?
So voted?
Yeah.
So voted, seventy-five percent and get you some.
Seventy-five percent, monthly payments to be determined.
Any permit from this point forward is seventy-five percent?
Correct.
Okay, on Highland Commons only?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what about River Bridge? The hotel is, is coming up, they have a meeting on the fifteenth of July?
Well, we could vote on that later, but as long as you brought it up, we might as well wrap it into the, the concept, and.
I mean, the apartments.
Deal with it, sure.
The hotel.
Okay, I think, that's fine, for, for that and for River Bridge.
So.
Do one for, do one for Highland Commons, and then do a second one for River Bridge.
I'm just gonna cut the wire.
I saw that, that River Bridge is going into the planning board for the hotel, and I think the apartments, too, so they must be. I'm sure they're not ready for electrical permits, but we can get it done.
You know, how many affordables will be in those apartments?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four?
That's the number we voted, eighty-four.
Well, that takes.
You're at five point four percent.
Takes us, so what do we need, seventy-two as we sit here, and we're at sixty-four?
Well, and, and I heard that they were trying to do mediation on Northbrook Two, which would be better than having to go through bankruptcy, so maybe we'll get those back.
Okay.
So, the, the municipal building was built in nineteen ninety-eight? Yeah, sixteen years ago, and we're now getting the notice from the D E P about the water supply, sixteen years later.
As I say, I thought that, my understanding was that we had.
Grandfathered.
Yeah, and again, I was, I was not directly involved, I wasn't a selectman or anything along with that.
We didn't change the public water supply, it's the same well, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Let's just trigger a testing, let's get it, when's the last time we tested it, do we test it yearly, because it's public water supply?
No, you get tested quarterly and monthly, we get, we test monthly.
I.
For bacteria, and then you have quarterly ones, you get a sampling schedule from the D E P, but monthly is.
Does, hmm, well, they, they do hire a contractor, they come in here once a month and take a sample?
No, Dave, Dave takes a water sample and brings it out to Worcester.
Or you can hire somebody, we need to hire somebody. You have to, oh, being a public water supply, you have to go through an annual report every year, and you have to do a compliance report on.
Who does that, our border health, or?
No.
Dave, Dave is, is practicing or not fully licensed, but in, like, a learner's permit mode, and.
Dave who?
Regera.
The custodian?
Okay, excuse me, I didn't know, yeah. Well, I mean, this is seventeen pages worth of stuff, that I think, has anybody seen this before this evening?
I just handed to Sue Regera tonight, and she's gonna give it to Bill Brookings.
I think we need to agenda it for next meeting, yeah.
I think you're supposed to be some response within thirty days, or action plan or documentation as to what is being done.
If we're being tested at monthly, and nothing's wrong, I wouldn't treat it as urgent, frankly, just.
Well, I mean.
They're not gonna come in and close the building down.
Wow.
Now there's a thought.
Holy cow.
Maybe they will.
You'll have to drink bottled water and go out to the back pond.
We don't have a bubbler in the place, do we?
Right, outside the door.
Well, we've got the hole in the spring.
Well, that's what I mean, it's bottled.
It is bottled.
Yeah, we don't have a bubbler.
No, uh, no, you don't have a water bubbler, I don't think, at the building.
They make coffee, maybe, and drink up at the room, yeah.
I make coffee with it.
Well, then you've killed everything in it, you've boiled it.
The water's tested every month, I'm sure there's.
I just think it's only tested for.
Well, you test for bacteria and nitrate? You get, you get a testing schedule, I mean, I know from the nursery school that.
I think we put this on the agenda for next week, there's no action items.
I found out he says mails, that's how recently that came in.
Yeah, exactly.
I was gonna scan and send it to you all, but.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be good. All right. Okay. Then a discussion of a selecting goal-setting meeting.
Judy actually brought that up on May nineteenth, I saw in the meeting minutes as I was.
September, end of September.
Okay.
Agenda up?
Sure.
Okay.
Right, had Munisi bid for mower on that one.
Nineteen A is next.
Yes.
Okay, so, we put the Woods mower, the nineteen ninety-six Wood mower on Munisi bid for five hundred dollars, and it sold for two thousand one hundred and ten dollars, we had forty bids on it.
Wow.
So.
Really?
Do we accept the final bid?
We didn't buy it back ourselves, too, yeah, no, okay.
Do we accept the final bid of two thousand one hundred and ten dollars?
I would like to say so, a motion, I would make a motion to, to so.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I sent him an email, and he emailed me back and said he'd wait until he heard about the vote. He's from Pennsylvania.
Okay. All right. I would invite people to look down the miscellaneous correspondence, and if there is any item that people wish to discuss, we can discuss it.
There, I have a question about this just in general, I mean, Peggy always listed the miscellaneous correspondence, and we're down to double, triple letters for tonight, we've got down to triple A, so I exhausted the alphabet, not once, not twice, but the last correspondence is labeled triple A. I, in my experience as a reporter, do not remember seeing Oars list all the miscellaneous correspondence, it may be a category called miscellaneous correspondence, but this is going up, you know, on my town government, it takes up a lot of space.
Yep.
I don't know what, if you have a preference for this or not, I mean, it does allow the public to see what you're looking at, but you're not always necessarily looking at it, in a way, it implies that you have reviewed all this stuff, and sometimes you haven't.
Well, I mean, I don't think we need thanks for the basketball courts, or, I mean, people can disagree, the Oars letter.
What was that, Judy? The kids.
M, M is thanks for the freshly lined basketball courts, someone wrote a thank you.
But would you keep criticism in?
Oh.
Signed letters of criticism, but you wouldn't keep the.
I would have painted those green, I'll tell you that, I went by there the other day, it was hot, hot, black, tie, the kids are on there playing, but they were enjoying it, it brought them out of the woodwork, they're down there every day.
I don't know, I guess we can think about it, we can ponder it, okay?
Ponder what?
If you want everything that's in here listed, I don't think we needed the Gazette, June nineteenth article on.
That came from.
Pipeline Action Group.
Yeah, that came from Diane Peterson, and she wanted you all to see it, but.
Well, I mean, you can forward it to us, but I don't know that it needs to go on our.
Well, Walter would be not happy if I forwarded that many more emails, just shot me a dirty look, I could have scanned that when I got that, or we could go and send it to you by email, but, I mean, consider that some of the, I mean, yeah, you're right, the newspapers and the publications, some of that stuff.
Do you have a unsubscribe thing at the bottom of that?
It's like, you could block.
I mean, I, I do, I find it useful to see the list.
Yeah.
You know, because I can scan it, and then if there's something that I feel is important, it helps me to zero in on that. And as I said, the way I tried to run the meetings in the past was not to go over all of the miscellaneous book, we'd be here a long time, if we went through the alphabet three times tonight, for instance.
It's helpful to have it listed, because then we have a listing of what was in the meeting packet, at least in terms of miscellaneous correspondence, but not everything else ahead of that, that has documentation attached to it.
Right.
Or things that are presented at the meeting.
Right, I agree.
Well, the Kinder Morgan one, we've already discussed.
Yep.
And that's on as M M, so we don't really need that.
Yeah, and again.
Whoops, not M M, it's in there somewhere.
This is, this is okay, and I don't think, I, I think it's fine, and I think if there's to a certain extent duplication, when I look at this, I say, okay, that's there, that's fine, we've, we've read that, we've done that.
If you like that question.
That's what I do, too, you know, without stopping, go through every one, I think this approach to it, take a look at it, the former chair used to go through every single one of them.
Hey, I would still go through them if I had a chance, so now I have to put little dots and make them read them. Okay, let's start with A.
No.
Response Environment Peach Hill Road.
That's an old spill that was contained.
Okay.
They just did never, yeah.
Okay.
I don't see anything on here that I.
J, I asked the Cable Advisory Committee to chime in, I gave them a copy, we get, we're given three spiral bound bond, on binders by, from Comcast, asking the selectmen to sign off on a resolution supporting the Comcast takeover of Charter.
No way.
With a one hundred and twenty-day period with which to file the, the selectmen's feelings with the F C C, and a one hundred dollar check, I think, which is the filing fee with the F C C, if you wanted to.
So if we want to complain, we have to pay them?
No, this is, this is a resolution supporting the takeover.
So what if we don't support the takeover?
I don't think it matters, I think they're just looking at this lineup support, if they can get it. So anyhow, the advisory committee has a copy of that packet, and they're gonna make a, they're gonna meet with you hopefully later in the summer or early fall.
Don't we all get a beacon anymore?
No, there's one for FinCon, there's two for this office.
I get one at home.
Do you get one directly mailed at home?
I think so.
Oh.
Do they have names on them?
They have the chairman's name on it, typically, but they may not have changed it, come on, take it, take it, I don't keep them.
I mean, we, we usually used to get one.
Yeah, back in the day, I remember different towns and committees, different towns, even they would all kept one, but.
Maybe you should call them up and ask them.
I can do that.
Because we pay them.
Yeah, for dues, yeah, ask for three, for four.
Nah, there's just one I want to-
Ask for three.
Well, ask them what they have mail wise. If Walter's getting one at home, then we only need two here.
You were gonna go to the Energy Aggregation Project, the L thing?
The Hampshire Council?
Mm-hmm.
So I think that we're gonna, I was gonna bring that up, that we're gonna, I'm gonna call them up and ask them to come and meet the Energy Committee and then if the Energy Committee thinks it's worthwhile, we'll bring it forth to the selectmen.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
That's L.
Okay.
On number S or letter S, um, the teachers have agreed, signed agreement to the direct deposit.
Mm-hmm.
Treasurer asks how it's going with the police, but maybe that's-
Uh, they said that that would be no problem. We haven't finished negotiations, but they said that would be no problem.
What's happening with Double A, with the building inspector in Eddie Crosby Road, did he give them a-
Yep, it was only enforcement letter, it's in the packet.
And so they're still doing, I saw those pictures from Saturday.
Yeah, I get it, I just, I get it.
Hey, Mary, I get that. Barry left that here probably by accident, that's the original letter Larry sent him, so he'll want that in the historical literature.
Oh.
Just put it, we need it boxed.
Yeah, I have a, the photocopy he left here, I'll keep the originals for us.
There you go.
Okay, and then I'll give him the copy.
All right.
So typically on CC, we get emailed the building inspector permit, are you just not doing that?
No, I actually did it today, I had to close, he added two more things for the end of this fiscal year, so I added them today.
Okay.
And one of them was a Highland Commons edition, so I added that on CC, I didn't email them out. Um, June, Jill Fossey helped me figure out how to get rid of the password on the Highland Commons listing, so I only figured it out right before the meeting, or I would've emailed the whole thing out to you all, I can email that out, so you can keep it if you wanna keep it electronically. Walter?
Huh?
You want that email?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, okay.
Do you want to see the, uh, building inspector's letter on the-
I read the letter, I was just curious if there was an update on it because they sent pictures on Saturday that showed that he, it's, I thought he gave him-
He didn't know that, that gentleman did not know that that letter was sent out.
Yep. This letter was sent out on the twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Which was like-
Friday?
Uh, oh, it's Thursday or Friday.
Okay, so he didn't, he hadn't gotten it?
No.
Um, the, the person who's been giving the helpful complaints
Mm-hmm.
does not know about that letter for house.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
What about MM?
Thanks to Nicole Bowman. And I've lined up more projects for her.
Excellent.
Yeah, great.
She's back. What's the, um, II, the final judgment on the Cook property, is that what we just-
Dennis says that that's a property that'll soon be, uh, the town owned property that's gonna need Maya coverage because it would be a vacant-
Where is this property?
Where's the Cook property?
That, the Dudley Road one?
Ninety-five Coburn Road.
Oh, Coburn.
Ninety-five Coburn Road?
I'm not sure if that's one, he said that as soon as he closed on it, they're gonna wanna sell it.
They'd be in the town?
The town's gonna wanna sell, it has tenants in it now.
It's an actual house with people in it?
Apparently so. If I'm thinking of the right thing. Right?
That might've been on a list when the committee reviewed and we decided conservation didn't want it, we should sell it, so we never, I didn't pay any attention to it after that.
Hmm.
Okay. Anything else?
I wanna look at the compensation survey, but you don't have to talk about it, I just wanna look at it.
No, it's a form for us to fill out and get back to them.
Oh, I thought it was a, okay, never mind.
No, no.
Okay.
What about Double M?
Double M?
Wait, wait a minute, what about Double L? Let's read a highway, someone writing a letter praising the highway for snow clearing.
See, that's another complimentary letter. I gave that to Keith. Oh, L.
Uh, hang on, let me get that out of those.
It's on letterhead, it looks like a-
Right in here, because that would say here. Oh, okay. Sorry, I looked at the letterhead and I uh-
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah.
Okay, uh, this letter is sent to formally acknowledge the incredible improvement in the condition of the streets in Berlin this past winter and now the improvement in snow removal and sanding was dramatic, others in Berlin would travel almost daily to my office in Manchester, Connecticut. I leave my house very early in the morning. This past winter, the road was always either cloud or sanded and I never had a difficult time navigating to the highway, I was never concerned that I would have a difficulty on my return trip. Mr. Clemmer and his team should be recommended for the excellent job he's doing for the Highway Department, Sue Connor.
Very nice.
Um, MM.
MN?
MM.
MM, says Walter, he'd like to talk about that.
Okay.
Actually, I would like to talk about that.
Oh, wait a minute, that's already gone by, why is that on here?
MM.
MM, that's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Uh, a, a thought on that.
Sorry?
I have a thought on that.
On what?
MM.
Taking time off.
It says Admin Secretary, June twenty-fifth time off request.
Yeah, that's just the date of when I took, oh, that's the date of when I made the request.
It's for tomorrow.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, that's what I was like, huh?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I was thinking you were, yeah, yes?
I stayed Thursday night for ten and a half extra hours to try to help close out the year.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know how you feel about comp time, if not-
I think, no, I think comp time is just fine.
Okay. I don't know, yeah, so I just put it as a regular day of work.
Put it as a regular day of work.
Okay.
And you just have to like, because you're looking for ten and a half hours of comp time.
No, I'm not.
Six hours of work, you're gonna have to have a, a really good day, that's all.
Yeah.
That's, all right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay?
So what's the NN?
No.
The Attorney General?
That's just feedback on the, um, basically it's largely about the pawn shop file law. It's in tinkering with the language of the pawn shop file law from the Attorney General's office.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, is all the pawn shop?
No, only one of them, but the other two were not major changes to the articles. The office system's on the pawn shop stuff. Which is surprising because he clipped it from out of town, so.
What about that, uh, Double Y one, there was some complaints about signage and stuff that, uh, getting done without permission, does the chief approve that? Do you know, Mary, does uh-
You approved the bicycle event and, and I-
He probably approves it before him.
He's already been in contact with them, but this is them changing the route.
Yes, oh, all right.
And as to signage, I, I copy highway every time, so this girl, when she emailed today asking for a change in the route, she's also picking up the thread and constantly copying highway.
Okay.
So I, whether Keith sends her directly back, make sure, I can send her a letter back saying, make sure, special emphasis-
Oh, they don't do it again, we don't give them permission again, yeah?
I could do that.
Yeah, do it.
If the, if the board agrees.
Pick up all signs and uh-
Within twenty-four hours of the event or something?
Yeah. They paint signs even in the roads around, if Keith doesn't have an objection to that and the police chief, then I guess it's all right, but-
Pick up all signs.
Yeah.
Are you saying they paint signs too?
Yeah, in the road, with spray paint, go around the corner.
Do you want them blacked out?
Well, they shouldn't do it.
Oh, I agree.
I think that, I don't know that they've ever done it in Berlin, but you've seen it done other places.
Hmm.
So. So what is-
It's forty, twenty-four hours of event or, or would be taken into consideration the next year.
Mm-hmm.
See, we know what the chief says, is that actually as long as they're on the public way, you don't have any right to stop at any of them.
The bicycle thing, but the signage we do.
I thought it on them.
Mm-hmm.
Is that all?
Yep.
Okay.
So conservation regarding requests for progress-
Okay, sorry, I thought you wanted to ask about, um, I'm trying to find the, the number now, somebody called it out.
Why, why?
It's, uh, the approval of the articles, they did approve Article Thirty-Six. They made some suggestions about its coordination with other laws, but that's, they approved it.
Okay, I just-
Okay?
Yep.
Um, conservation, RR.
Yeah, Mary, do you have the substance of that, I'm trying to just-
Oh, a woman emailed and didn't explain why, she wants permission to use town owned land. Skip responded that he believes that she's not, not, uh, not a resident of the town.
Yeah.
Believes it might be a wedding. He's gonna talk to her about it and find out if it's conservation land or if it's town owned land.
Okay.
And, 'cause I sent her an email back and I copied Skip, I, she wanted to know if I just used the land. I copied Skip back and I said, tell me what car you talked about, if it's conservation, you need conservation approval, if it's town owned-
Oh, at Berlin Meadows, which is-
Oh, must be the corner here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Across from your house, you don't wanna host a-
Likes to want to have a wedding on Berlin Meadows with a tent and a hundred to a hundred and fifty people.
You could have an open bar at your house.
I could have an open bar.
They could use your bathroom.
Yeah. Exactly.
That's true, I mean, what it-
What do you do with a hundred and fifty people?
Party bodies. You have to truck them in.
So do you allow that on conservation land?
Never have.
Do you rent it?
Uh, cons, this really is conservation's hunt and, uh, Skip says, I will vote no since there would be cleanup.
Right.
No conservation value, doesn't live in Berlin, I'll let you know at the ConCom votes.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll let the ConCom vote on that.
It's a good idea, we'll meet Wednesday night, right there as a matter of fact.
So, you know, we voted the, um-
I'm gonna charge you fifty bucks a pop at the bathroom and I'll convert, I'll contribute half of that to the ConCom, so you know I'm gonna bring that, okay?
So VB is a good one.
VB?
VB.
VB. Okay.
So we would have to vote to change the, um, personnel spreadsheet.
I suppose you can do it now because the law has passed. So if you wanna agenda that for the next meeting and prepare a revised compensation grid.
Yeah.
VB?
Yes, yes, this is an increase in the minimum wage.
To nine.
To nine.
This year. And then every year you're gonna have some ramp up.
Well, halfway through the year it changes.
Calendar right, right, that's right. So what do you do? Do it now? And have it be take effect, so everyone knows that it's gonna take effect?
Well, you can vote a, you can vote a new, uh, compensation spreadsheet that's effective January first.
With respect to that line.
It's only library that's affected, so hopefully he budgeted enough to cover his pages.
Who works for minimum wage there?
Library pages.
Pages, oh.
Oh, actually, um, June said after I sent that, that election workers get paid minimum wage too, it's gonna affect always. I don't know if, is that a ground for reserve on transfer if you didn't budget enough?
Yep.
Yep.
How do we know what the legislature's gonna do?
Yep.
So then with the two years going by, it jumps up to eleven dollars an hour, it's gonna really start affecting the bottom third of the compensation grid.
Yep.
About how people get compensated.
Yep.
But it's twenty-
Well, I would suggest that for purposes of this year, that we asterisk those below nine dollars an hour.
All grades and steps?
All grades and steps below nine dollars an hour. Asterisk them. And we'll put a line on the bottom that says it will be nine dollars an hour effective January first, two thousand fifteen, and we can vote on that next, next week. Okay, next meeting rather, okay?